Thank you for giving us the opportunity to come here tonight and talk to you about the 370 development project and give you an update on what's going on there. I also have Russ Batesville with me here. He's the in-charge manager over our public work services and Development Department of the city. And a lot of you are familiar with Russ because you've done a lot of successful road projects together over the years. And so he'll be helpful if he has some questions as Development, our public works type of questions. So I also have Lisa Beeding here who's our Communications Director, helping us kind of put this together. What I'd like to do is start with, this is gonna come, there you go. I want to start with a map just of the area so we know what we're talking about. The premier 370 development area is bordered by this yellow line and that in effect is the levy that protects the development area. And you can see 370 basically bisects the development area. And then to the north is our Lakeside Park, which maybe many of you have been there. It's developing quite nicely with fishing and hiking and we have our RV pads and that. And then we have Interstate 70, of course, to the south, Mid Rivers Mall. That's the Truman interchange, basically, at 370 right there. And it sets up as an entrance to the park there. On the next slide, this slide is to show you more zoomed in who the owners of the property are in the area. The Levy District owns this lighter yellow areas here. And basically, what they have ownership by virtue of Gundaker, who was once the partner of Duke at the beginning of this, who went bankrupt. So the Levy District now owns all this property and will be actually offering it for sale and development. Duke, which was an original partner, is this darker tan area. And part of the Duke area even encompasses this area. This is Dayton Freight. We'll have another slide to kind of show that later. And then there's two individual property owners there. On the north is the Grand Slam Golf Course. And on the southern is, was part of the original golf course, but it's now it's owned by the bank. But those are the two other players, I guess, in terms of developing the area. On this next slide, it shows the, how the development was envisioned at the front end, basically, in the project. So again, here's the Duke area. And you can see these are planted, they're like 30-acre lots, and they're geared towards more bulk warehouse type developments. So, and we'll have a slide to show you kind of where one of the proposed ones is going now. But those are generally buildings that are greater than 125,000 square feet and more typically, a half a million, even a million square foot type buildings there. To the north, which was the original Gundaker development, that was primarily geared for buildings that were less than 125,000 square feet. And they're called flex service buildings. And basically, that would be buildings that are, you might see like an office in front and then maybe some light manufacturing activity or something going on to the back, maybe some warehousing or whatever is where. Well, a good example might be our Applea project, which I think you're familiar with, where they, where they're doing their container making in the back and then they're warehousing it. But then they have their sales and support staff, basically, housed in the front. And those are like 75,000 square foot buildings roughly. And a lot of those are in Arrowhead. So good examples of that. And then there's some, there was some support buildings envisioned, which I'll be able to show you in the next slide, but a lesser percentage, that might be an office building, more typical office development or retail kind of support commercial. The, going back to around circa '07, '08, there was an artist rendering of the area, how it would look built out. And now we're looking really from the east to the west. That's the Truman interchange here. And you can see where they have depicted those larger warehouse type buildings to the south of Highway 370. And we have the smaller, more flex service buildings there to the north. And they didn't do anything here. And that's because those are the, that's the Grand Slam Golf Course, Par 3 Golf Course that was there. And so they didn't project what would be built there. But the thought was it would be kind of more of the same. It could either be these smaller flex service buildings or you could see it really could accommodate a couple of big buildings if they were coming into play. Another way to look at this, when they did the original plan, the Lakeside 370 folks, which is Duke and Gundaker, basically did a projection of build-out. And this is more a summary of what they thought the ultimate build-out would be. And you can see 87% of the development was going to be in this flex service or bulk building. And then there was less than 15%, about 100 acres, that they had dubbed for more office building, you know, legal offices or insurance office, I don't know, business type offices. And then some support retail restaurant that would support the area. And then potentially even a hotel, which was thought maybe at the Truman interchange, that a hotel might be attractive at the Truman interchange. But these uses were just going to be more complimentary. The core activity was these flex service and bulk buildings. The next slide, this shows that things are really starting to go now on the 370 area. The Duke recently submitted plans for a 500,000 square foot flex, or flex, 500,000 bulk building in this lot right here. And they actually have, they've told us about two more potential suitors that are looking at these other areas. And one of them is actually something that's bigger than the 500,000 square feet. So you can see, these lots could be consolidated. You could, you could put a million square foot building there. And to give you an idea, the Duke building is like 10 acres under roof. So these are large-scale projects or whatever that should be generating a lot of permanent jobs, basically, nice quality jobs. And then not to leave them out, this is Dayton Freight. And so they've been operating there for several years now successfully with their truck distribution The next slide is just a rendering of the Duke building. It's a nice building that they're putting up. So again, the Duke, you know, the Duke area, we feel pretty good about. It's often, and finally taken off, the economy finally stabilized. The timing of this whole thing was bad, as you know. We got this going in 2008 and then the economy crashed. So not only this area, but all areas around the country were in bad, bad status. Again, we orient you to the, to who owns the land. So what we're really talking about tonight is more what's happening here with the Levy District, because we're not talking about any residential changes or whatever in the Duke area. And you'll see that we're really talking about some minor adjustments in the, in the tan area for the Levy District. Let's see. So the owners in this area are being, the Levy District in particular, has been approached by several developers, basically, in the last 12 months. There's been five developers that have approached the Levy District. Each developer has some residential component in what they're bringing forward. And basically, the discussion stops right there because the existing zoning right now does not provide for residential zoning. So they come in, they talk, they inquire, they say, "What's the likelihood?" And we say, "Well, right now, there's no residential provided for, and we've agreed not to provide any residential zoning in that area." And so they stop short then of the next phase, which would be the actually, and I know some of you had wished to maybe see more details about it, but they stop here because to give you more details, they gotta spend a little money. They gotta do some engineering work, they gotta do some site analysis. And they actually then come forward with what they think is more of a bona fide plan in terms of, and remember, they're talking, "We're not the landowner in this, so we're kind of the outside party looking in, just saying, 'Hey, it's not zoned for this right now, so we're not entertaining it at this point.'" The, so what we did from here after talking to the landowners is we actually met with, well, hang on. We actually met with the, sorry, let me go back. So this would be the areas in question. So we had two proposals that landlords received in this area, which is at the Truman interchange. And there was three potential developers that had approached the district there at the Spencer end of the project. So you can see, in terms of the overall scope, we're not talking about doing anything to the core purpose and vision or whatever for the district. So with that in mind, we approached County Executive, said, "Hey, we've got some folks that are knocking on the door. Do you have concerns about residential still in the area? What are your thoughts?" And the County Executive asked us to start the conversation with the school districts. He was concerned about the school districts being impacted negatively if there's more students to educate and that. So we did meet with the school districts and, let me catch up on my slides here. Give you an idea, the two school districts involved are, we have St. Charles School District, basically to the eastern half of the district. And we have Fort Zumwalt that lies in the western part of the, of the development area. So we did meet with the school officials as requested. We did receive letters from both districts. The first one here is from Fort Zumwalt. And basically, just, there's a handout of the actual letter in your packet, but just to kind of highlight some things, the letter, part of the letter said, "Since this area's been available for several years and no development has taken place, it appears to the district that economic development is likely not to happen without some incentive. Therefore, the district would not oppose housing in the Fort Zumwalt portion of the 350 acres indicated, but the position's based on no more than 25% of the area in the Fort Zumwalt area being developed into housing." And then finally, it's based on the assumption that the City of St. Peters would continue to share in any increased sales tax revenue it has in the past with our city center TIF. So our city center TIF, we started back in 1992. It's about to expire, but the school district was part of our discussion at the very beginning in terms of how we laid that TIF out. We actually met with the school before we started the project. I don't want to say how old I am, but I was actually in that meeting, which is kind of hard to say right now. But the, basically, we crafted a backbone to the TIFs, and it's the same for all our TIFs, including the 370 TIF, that provides a mechanism to automatically share revenues that are captured by the TIFs. So that was why I think they felt like they wanted to make sure that that was still in place.
Yes, Steve. Can we ask? Yeah, ask a question for us.
Explain how all that, how that sharing takes place, what the formula is.
Sure.
In fact, I called you during a meeting to...
All right. Hopefully, I won't bog down the issue here. But basically, what we, we're looking for a mechanism for the EATS, I mean, for the pilots, which are the real estate taxes that are captured by the district. We already, with sales tax, which are called EATS, just by definition of EATS, we'll get half of our sales tax and the TIF captures half. The county will get half of its sales taxes and the other half is captured by the TIF. But the districts, basically, they survive on real estate taxes. And so 100% of their real estate taxes are captured in what's called pilots in the TIF. So the way we structured this is, we said, "Well, let's, let's come up with a formula." And like I said, we actually developed this with Dr. DeBrey in the district. And there was two sales taxes that were kind of special sales taxes, our transportation taxes and the county's capital improvement tax, about 1.25% of the overall tax bill. And what we said is, "We'll measure the dollars that come in that way, but then we'll declare a like amount of pilots to be surplus." And the reason we have to do that is because when we declare a surplus, it goes back to who generated. So if we'd have just said we declare the sales tax to be surplus, then it would have went right back to the county and the city. And we were already getting some proportion of that. So we measured that and then basically rebated that. So, and for the city center TIF, actually, that ended up being quite substantial, I think the library folks here and the school district folks could attest to. I think the school district has received almost $12 million under that formula since we started the TIF back in '92. And that TIF's actually set to expire December 28th of '15. So we feel pretty good about, you know, delivering on that promise. And I think the formula's worked as outlined.
So you take the percentage of property tax that they would receive and take that same percentage and divide up the sales tax?
It's actually just the dollar. So let's say, let's say 500,000 is generated in those special taxes. We'll declare pilots of 500,000 to be surplus. And then the county collector will distribute that proportionately to the district. So if Zumwalt is 70% of the tax rate, they'll get 70% of the, but it's actually a dollar amount that we...
It's not just the schools, it's every, every district?
Right. Fire district, ambulance.
How about the county?
County, but you're such a small, you got just a tiny real estate tax rate. So you're, you don't benefit much by that, you know.
Well, you can get John's bag of peanuts back for him again.
So, I mean, you know, you've had, you've always had a very low real estate tax historically and so...
My last question on this is, when you talk to the cities, do they understand that the sales tax available is going to be basically cut in half because you're not going to take our sales tax, the county's?
Well, no, we'll still measure your sales tax. That's why it's important to say, "We'll measure." So we're still going to measure that amount. We're going to measure what your EATS would have been, we're going to measure what our EATS would have been under the 1.25 and that dollar amount. So it's not really, the fact that we declare yours surplus does not impact what they get because we still have to measure that 1.25% that's generated.
So they're still... But aren't they going to get half of a smaller amount?
They'll get, they'll get the same, so whatever that sales tax is generated, times that 1.25%, which includes the county and the city portion.
Including what you're actually not getting from it.
Yes, yeah. And so we'll just operate on less. Yeah, that's our promise to the districts that we're, you know, we measure that dollar amount and then that dollar amount is declared surplus. So that's why the percentage is maybe not quite, we want to focus on what's that dollar that's generated. And then that's what we do. So whatever that is, in the case of city center, that's basically, it's exceeded the real estate. So, gosh, I don't know, for several years, three, four, whatever, they've got 100% of the real estate taxes rebated on the district. So, because those special taxes actually exceeded what the real estate tax bill. So you stop at what the real estate tax bill is, but they get 100%. So city center TIF, I'd say since 2010, the taxing districts have gotten 100%, just as if there's no TIF there at all. So...
Tim, when you get a chance, will you do a hypothetical, just example of a generic project? It's different than my background coming from the St. Charles city. So if you could, just give us a simple scenario and here's how it would work if there was, you know, X number of dollars generated in pilots.
Want me to do that kind of now?
You mean now or like...
You can do it later. You can send it to us later then.
Oh, okay. I was going to say, I did not...
No, no, no.
I could almost work it up in my mind if you wanted to.
No, no, no.
As long as you forgive me if I accidentally like transpose the number or something.
No, just, I'd like to see, you know, just, here it is, simple so that when I'm comparing it...
I'd be happy to do that.
The way I, I think is still the way St. Charles does it, and I know that it's different on...
And St. Charles does have a different mechanism.
Right.
Because everything's born out of its own history. In our case, there was no TIFs at all in St. Charles County. So we actually reached out because we're going to be the first one. And then, I don't know, the powers that be that invented TIFs said, "Sit down with the school district, sit down with the county." And so we did that. Now, the county at the time in 1992 was the Commissioner's farm. So we sat down with the three county commissioners. We sat down with Fort Zumwalt school officials. Dr. DeBrey was, you know, he's a long, long been there. I was there at the time as a finance director back in the 90s. So we basically said, "Here's what we're doing. What do you think?" You know, the Recplex was a project that we were trying to generate assistance on so we could bring the Olympic diving. And then later on, we had the Costco project or whatever. But they actually helped us to kind of craft and we kind of went through some what ifs. And at the end of the day, it was like, "Okay, we think that'll work. We just don't want to go 20 years without seeing anything from this." And it's kind of pleasing to know that, I mean, we did it on the chalkboard and hoped that it was going to work out, but, you know, there's been substantial. I think that all the districts and city center were approaching like $20 million that was rebated through '14. And we're actually getting ready to do '15's distribution, which will be another three and a half million or so. So this TIF will end with about 23 million.
I just heard a second ago that half the sales taxes go to the TIF. When I see this memorandum of understanding that says, "St. Charles County keeps 100% of its sales tax income generated in the TIF."
Right. So we'll, by virtue of that agreement, we will, we declare the port that's captured back to the county, we declare it a surplus. And I give a letter, or we give a letter to the county each year, I think...
That goes to the county.
Right. You'll get...
None of that goes to the schools or to the library.
No. But we will measure your dollars still.
Here's, here's, let me put it simply.
Okay.
If we didn't have this agreement, which we entered into to make this project move forward, if we didn't have this agreement, wouldn't these districts get twice as much money as they're going to get now?
No. Because we're going to measure what's generated.
You're going to take more than a half then?
We're still going to, we're still going to measure what's generated by the 1.25%. So if there's, kind of, getting back to your example, if those taxes, if the city, let's say the city's tax was, I'm trying to think of what would work as an example, 50,000. And the county's was 75,000. So there's 125,000 that would be, would be captured as EATS by the TIF. We will declare 125,000 of pilots to be surplus. As a second step, because of this memorandum of understanding, we're going to declare your 75,000 to be surplus. That's going to go to you. That'll go right back to you.
So the actual TIF will receive less than 50% of the sales tax?
Right. Right, yes.
So when you keep referring to sales tax, but there's no, there's nothing there right now, right?
True. I mean, other than the Dayton Freight development, really not.
Right. So there's no sales tax whatsoever. So what exactly is paying the bonds?
What is paying the bonds?
I mean, what's paying, if there's nothing generated, this has been a 2008 project, right?
The developer basically is getting virtually no reimbursement under their, they advanced the money for the infrastructure. And they're getting virtually no money now because there's not much there. I mean, they're getting some, you know, the Dayton Freight is generating a little. But the way this was developed too, is the city pledged at the front end for the first five years to do a million dollars a year out of transportation because there was a lot of road network being built there. So their note, the way the plan was before the economy crashed was, we will service the note with our transportation fund dollars because we're building roads. So we pledged $5 million, a million dollars a year, just out of our own city resources. And then the idea was by then, development will happen and there'll be enough increment in that that we can continue to, so yeah, the developer's sitting there with a note that's really not, and what happens with the developer is when the, when this expires, whatever is not paid on the note is just not paid on the note. It's forgiven. It's not a default. I mean, the developer's betting on themselves that there'll be enough increment generated to pay that back.
What I'm asking is, is the whole idea behind this TIF project was the manufacturing and the sales of products and stuff, that was what was going to generate the funds to pay the TIF, right? But at this point, we have none of that to pay the TIF bonds. So now by going in with residential development, how is that, I don't understand how that's going to fulfill any of the obligations.
May I, like, go, continue on? And then we can kind of dovetail back?
Can I ask one?
Because I can make one statement there before you do go on. And just to make clear, because I've, I've been told this before. Okay.
And I'm assuming the taxpayers of the city of St. Peters aren't on the hook for any of this.
No.
You guys were smart enough to sell the property. I mean, it's, it's a developer who's going to suffer the consequences.
If it generates income, then they'll get their notes paid back. If it generate, if this sits there like with nothing there for the next 20 years and the developer basically advanced 18 million in infrastructure and they advanced, you know, somebody someday will reap the benefits of that, but they won't be paid back.
Okay.
And the shorter the time between when they started and the end of the TIF, the 23 years, then there's less time for that to pay itself back. But I might make one other, what we're talking about today too, just so you know, we're not talking about changing any of the underlying TIF commitment here. We're not, we're not talking about adding any TIF dollars. We're not planning on incentivizing residential development. We've never used TIF to spur or try to encourage. So this has to come in under its own market weight. And if they think they can come in and develop those two little pockets on either end and it can, they can do the project, build the project, and it'll pay for the land or whatever it has to do, then great. If they come to us and say, "Well, you know, we're a little short," it's like, "No, we're done." We're not, because we're not talking, and today, when you decide yes, no, or whatever you want to go on this, it won't change the underlying commitment to the infrastructure. That's done. You know, there is a few more things to do north of the highway. We've got a couple sewer pump stations that we have to build and that northern road has to be completed. But really, we've got, you know, close to 18 million, like I said, that the developer has advanced in the, under the ground, basically, and on top of the ground, I guess, with the road. So, let's see, where am I? Okay, St. Charles, I don't think I showed this slide yet. They were not opposed to the proposed development as described. So there was no, they didn't have a 25% commitment or anything. They just, in fact, the fact of having a few more students in the classroom wasn't, wasn't a problem for them because I think they actually want to put a few more bodies in the chair. I think their student population is a little bit lower, so they want to have the classrooms be a little bit fuller than they have. We talked about the memorandum of understanding and that's why, so, you know, basically, having the school district thing, we think, behind us in terms of their support, then we turn our attention back to you. And we talked about the memorandum of understanding. And just to remind you, there was more in the memorandum of understanding than just don't allow residential development. There was some, there was some common goals or whatever I think the city and the county wanted to achieve here. One of which was the Salt River Road extension from 370 to 79. So we agreed that we would work together to do that. We actually reconfigured the interchange there in Spencer, at Spencer Road, and got right away from the developers to keep the project affordable and actually participated in constructing some of the eastern portion of Salt River Road. And I think the county took the parts outside of their, outside of our municipal boundaries and built it on out. And I think we're all pretty happy about that, I think. You know, between Paige and that, I've driven on 70 West several times over the last month or so, and I told my wife, I said, "You know, it doesn't jam up right now in the evening at 5 o'clock," which is kind of amazing. And I think those two, this being one, have really contributed greatly to that. As County Executive Elman pointed out, we agree that we declare, so we'll capture those because you still capture them. Now, what we do that, we really do it in a letter. We measure it, we send you a letter and we say, "In this letter," I'm making it up, "we, we capture 100,000 in county sales taxes and in this letter, we're redistributing it to you." So we don't ask you to give it to us and give it back, but we need to at least document that that took place or whatever. We also agreed that we wouldn't use any blighting tools to go north of the municipal boundaries. So, you know, we're, the northern boundaries of the city are the park. And we agreed, we have no plans, intention, and they were secured in this agreement, to not go further with any other economic development blighting tools to go further. And then, as I said, the residential development, basically, was, we agreed. And at the time, you know, when you think about it, go back to the slide that shows the area. We, we were so focused on what we needed, which is, like, as you said, industrial development and job producing. And we had lost sight, not lost sight, but had underestimated the value of this park here. I mean, this is a beautiful park. It's a jewel for St. Charles County. And it's only kind of a natural progression that folks might be interested in living close to that park. That's the entrance to the park. It, you know, it'd be a nice place to live to be able to park, you know, get home, get on your bike, ride into the park, take a ride on the trail. At the other end, there's a trail that goes right into the western side of the park and connects to the trail that goes around the lake. There's a four and a half mile trail around the lake. So in hindsight, because we were happy to agree no residential because we're like, we're not planning on doing residential out there. But we forgot that this could be attractive in certain, in a small portion because of the proximity to the park and kind of just a live, work, play kind of scenario. So skip back to the...
All right, Tim, for the second time, we're going to ask, you know, the development, I mean, that's, I think...
I really have one more slide.
Well, the concerns are going to be, go ahead, but the concerns are more about the residential because all the other stuff has already been approved, so...
Okay. So, and so basically, what we're asking is that in lieu of the no residential, could it be amended to just set an overall, ah, where's my, there we go, I'm sorry. That we set an overall cap of 100 acres and then in the case of Zumwalt, that we wouldn't exceed the 25% of the acreage. So it'd be kind of a two-tier, so an overall district, so let's say 50 acres develop at that Spencer end and 50 acres develop, that's fine. But if everything is focused to Zumwalt, then the cap would be lower because they asked that it not be more than 25% of their development area. So the, again, there's the school district boundaries. And basically, what we're, what we believe are the benefits is removing a roadblock to some pending development with those residential. That allows for the development to happen under natural market conditions. And if it's under natural market conditions, then that means you just keep the TIF tools in your pocket. You don't need to do anything to incentivize what's going on there. in your pocket, you don't need to do anything to incentivize what's going on there, the tax base grows, the track record is, as that tax base grows, we have our smaller commitment to the infrastructure, what surplus will be surplus then. If this goes great guns, there's going to be surpluses that are generated beyond the automatic trigger, because we don't need to hold on to anybody's money if, if, if things are developing. So, and that's why on the city center, the last, we've done a hundred percent, which is more than, you know, I mean, basically, a hundred percent of the real estate taxes have been declared. And then, you know, lastly, you know, still jobs, good jobs, the Duke, the commercial type thing is going to have certain tradesmen that are working on the commercial projects. The kind of nice thing about residential is there really is a little different subset of the tradesmen, the carpenters and that, that are working on the, the housing, so it kind of kickstarts both ends there, so. All right, now I can shut up and...
No, that's fine. What we always do is offer the opportunity to oppose in perspectives, and the spokesman for Great Rivers Habitat, we're going to let him, we're going to give him five minutes, and then that will give some insight on the opposing perspective, and then the council can ask some questions. Mr. Music, did you want to, you requested some time, you, five minutes is going to be enough?
Five minutes is plenty. Thank you very much, and thank you to the council. I am Don Music, I'm a past president of Great Rivers Habitat Alliance, and I represent Great Rivers here tonight, and also Adolphus Bush, who's a past chairman of, of Great Rivers. I'm sure that everybody's well aware of the history that Great Rivers has with the city of St. Peters on the Lakeside Three Seventy Development, and I really thank the council for allowing me to address the work session tonight. I, I'm going to be brief, because what I have to say is, is, is pretty simple, and that's that I hear the city's attempts and, and am sympathetic certainly to their attempts to try to, to move this development down the line. I would be doing the same thing, I'm a developer and contractor by career and by experience, I would be doing the, the same things. I would caution the council to be very wary of, of the scenarios that are being posted right now. I think Duke's project, while ambitious, is, I think, spec. I don't think there are any tenants ready for that building at this point in time. I applaud Duke's sense of, of risk reward in, in putting a spec building up even in this marketplace, it's certainly a much better marketplace than it was in oh-eight and oh-nine. I worry about the, the idea of residential development down in Lakeside Three Seventy. I worry about the, the payoff of the TIF, while the city seems to, to feel that there's no problem, if it doesn't get paid off, it just doesn't get paid off, there are bondholders that will take a big bath on that. I would advise the city carefully, and I'm going to give you an example, we developed, I was the developer at Hanley and Eager Roads of the Meridian, which is a very large development, one hundred and thirty million dollar development, it's half a million feet, mixed use, has a MetroLink station with it. We likewise got caught in the oh-eight, oh-nine crunch, but we were leased, we were ninety-five percent leased, and still we had enormous problems with our TIF bonds, not from the income standpoint, but just from the management of the process of, of TIF and TDD, and, and making sure that the city was held responsible for their end of the management of that TIF, that the, that the banks that were backing up those TIFs with letter of credit were responsible in, in their management, and that the trustee for the TIF, another bank, was responsible in their manage of, management of the income and of the way the TIFs went forward. After several years of fights and arguments, legal battles, legal battles even more epic than the Great Rivers-St. Peters battles, we got to a point where we hired a TIF expert firm that came in and determined that we were, we were in fact missing some sales tax, after enacted taxes, parks taxes, utility taxes, that, that had to be paid back. This is, after all, public money, doesn't belong to the city, doesn't belong to the developer, doesn't belong to anybody but the public and, and the taxpayer. So we went at our, on our own nickel, hired Cook &amp; Riley, and I would advise and warn the, the county council that hiring or asking St. Peters to hire such an expert firm to quote unquote do the, you know, the waiting of this project relative to the balance of retail versus residential versus commercial, and looking at the projections on how much time is left on the TIF, how much income will be available based on the, on the, the project as conceived now, would be the best money that could be spent and the best time for you all to be able to review that and take a hard look at it. I can also tell you that, that from the standpoint, what I don't understand is, once again, we talk about pilots in which were payments in lieu of taxes and each eats, which are the sales taxes. The city's first concept for this project was that there would be big box retail down there along with, with, and this goes back to Mayor Brown, that was, I had the discussion with him, you shake your head, but that's what he told me. And we at the time, as Great Rivers, advised him, Tom, you know, the big boxes all exist up along Highway Seventy, up in the hills, nobody's going to go down in the floodplain to, to put big boxes, this is not the way they think. So then, then it was retooled, and, and I think you, you, you see that the market has come back a long way over the past couple of years, and yet still you're talking about sort of a weak involvement from the standpoint of, of the, the city's concept of where this development should go. I understand, I, I, you know, where you're coming from, and I, I certainly am sympathetic to that. I don't want to see the problem get worse and the hole get deeper, I want to see the bondholders get their money back, we want to see, and Great Rivers certainly is about the habitat, you know, I think you've done a, a great job with the park, and I congratulate you on that, and, and certainly that's more in keeping with what we think, you know, should or could be down in the, in the floodplain. But the thing was ill conceived from the start, and from my perspective, I think if you are going to go forward with this, you need to do more than, than throw some site plans up, some preliminary site plans, and say, we want approval for residential, we want to add this, we want to add that. I think you need to get, if the developers are really serious about it, we do it all the time. We spend some money in order to educate a county council, a municipality council, whomsoever about what the numbers really are going to look like here and what the projections should show in order to make sure this is really going to work. And if, if they're truly serious and you've got five developers, one or two might be willing to go ahead and go a step farther, get some things drawn for you, and, and I think you need to hire a TIF expert to stand up here and report to this council before the council ever gives such approval for the development. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Music.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Music?
Yeah, I had a question.
Sure.
I, I don't understand what difference it makes to the county if this is within the corporate limits of St. Peters, if...
If there's a major failure on this TIF and it ends up, do you think it's good for St. Charles County? I would ask you that question. You know, we're, we're certainly in the city of Brentwood with our development, but St. Louis County did not want to see a, a major failure of a TIF anywhere in St. Louis County. And I would charge that your responsibility as council members is certainly, and on behalf of the fire districts and the school districts, on behalf of the rest of the taxpayers in St. Charles County, is to make sure that the extra due diligence is done here in order to make sure that we're not heading to a major failure, a major default.
Steve?
John? Go ahead.
Don, as a, as a developer, I know one of the, one of the concerns here that the city has is if, if this, if these projects aren't done here, then we lose them. I guess my question to you as a developer, if there's a market for residential property in the county and it can't be done here, won't it be done somewhere else in the county?
Could likely, I mean, I think the question is...
You're not going to go to Madison County if the market for it is here.
And, and what I'm saying is, I think, this is, we're way down the river with this, sorry for the pun, but I think what I'm counseling is, and what I'm, I'm warning and what I'm asking, is that if in fact it's the council's decision, which Great Rivers will respect, to go forward with, with approval on this, all I'm saying is, you know, do yourselves the service, do the taxpayers the service of really getting somebody in that's an expert that will understand and quantify, you know, to a far greater extent, what the projections look like, where the payments are going to come from, whether this, this balance is achieved in the development as a whole on the go forward. You have only so many years left to pay off this TIF, you have only so many years to create a development in that regard that's going to be successful, and, and I would counsel that you need more information to approve such a, you know, a, a change in the development itself, because it has not been a success. And, and, you know, I would want it to be for St. Charles County, I would want it to be for St. Peters, and, and I think you need to go several steps farther in order to be able to make a valid decision.
Yeah, Mr. Cronin?
Sure.
Mr. Music, you're a successful developer in the St. Louis area, okay? What, what, as a developer, not tied to Great Rivers Habitat, what suggestions would you have to this council and the city of St. Peters to make that project more agreeable and more amicable to a developer that would want to come in and do? What would you, what would you do to make that more marketable to developer to come in and say, yeah, I'm willing to put my money down into this project and build something down there?
Well, I think unfortunately the incentives are gone, there's no way to, to levy any more incentives to a developer's pocket on this thing in order to, to achieve what you're trying to achieve in that regard, Mr. Cronin. And I think that the, the, the real issue comes down, if it were me and I were sitting in your seat, I would say, okay, let's try to balance this thing out, let's work with the city, let's try to, you know, ask more questions, let's try to get a, a balance. When I talk about a balance, I'm talking retail versus commercial versus residential, and then putting the whole thing together and saying, does it really work from that perspective? Are we just chipping away at this and, and taking another step further into a hole? Or are we really making a difference? And I think to, to try to, I think you will also, if you have those numbers, you will make a developer more comfortable about where he's heading, you know, in this thing. I hear that, you know, you've got a developer that's in for eighteen million dollars, and that, hey, if it, if it doesn't work, he loses eighteen million dollars, that's a lot of money. And, you know, Duke has a lot of money and, and, and a great reputation. You know, I wouldn't want to lose eighteen million dollars, you know, in St. Peters or anywhere else in our community, or anywhere else in the country. And I think you're right on, I think to try to make this a success, you need a lot more information, you need a balanced approach toward it, and I think I would, I would spend the effort to try to sit with these developers, and, and I encourage St. Peters to do the same thing, you know, understand where you're heading this time, don't throw money, more money at it, and don't, you know, look to, you know, taxpayers and bondholders to hold the note and, and say, well, if you get paid back, it's fine, if you don't, it's fine. That's not, I don't believe that's good stewardship from the standpoint of St. Charles County, and it certainly isn't from the standpoint of the city of St. Peters.
Yeah, Mr. White.
You mentioned earlier in your comments about the history of this project, there's probably a lot of people watching that, that don't know what you meant by that, could you recap that?
We, we, Adolphus Bush and myself, many years ago, and I can't give you the exact year now, it probably was in the early two thousands, had a meeting with Mayor Tom Brown when, and Paul Didion actually put the meeting together for us. And we had a meeting with him when the whole concept of the Lakeside Three Seventy Development was, was in its infancy. And we went to lunch and we talked about the idea of going that far out into the floodplain and in fact the floodway, and what that was doing to the habitat, what it was doing to the river flow, the danger of, of putting such development in, in that place, and the idea of, would it be successful from the standpoint of, of the city of St. Peters and St. Charles County? And we urged Mayor Brown to pull it back closer along Three Seventy. And, and he, he dismissed us and said, you know, it's not going to happen, we've got the ability to go that far out, we need to compete with the other municipalities around us, and, and we, several meetings were held. What ultimately happened was lawsuits flew by and between Great Rivers and St. Peter, city of St. Peters. St. Peters ultimately prevailed, and there were battles won back and forth, but St. Peters ultimately did prevail. But to what end? You know, you see where the development exists today, as I said, I, my heart goes out to these guys that are trying to take this thing and turn it into something, but really, you know, all along, you know, Mr. Bush as a, as a conservationist and as a, you know, he lives in St. Charles County. I do not live in St. Charles County, but I am a developer contractor and he, Adolphus and I have been best friends since seventh grade, and, and I also have a love for the habitat and a love for the bottoms and, and a love for St. Charles County in that regard. So we got together and, and numerous other people, business, hunters, conservationists, some politicians from, from, you know, St. Charles County, all got together and, and we, we raised money to try not just, this wasn't a witch hunt for us with St. Peters, but to look at, at the process of development in the floodplain all through the confluence, confluence floodplain, and to determine, there are some areas that, that make sense, there are other areas that don't make sense. And, and I still believe today, we would never have been at odds with the city of St. Peters had Mayor Brown just elected to pull it back closer and, and snug it up to the, the north side or east, whatever that is, I got the compass turns me around out here, of, of Three Seventy. So that's really the, the history of it, and the, I'm sure that, you know, it's interesting because we've made a lot of good friends at the city of St. Peters over the years, Len Pagano was one of them, and, and, you know, the problem was for any mayor coming in after Mayor Brown, you know, the die was cast. And I understand where you, what you guys are trying to accomplish and I respect it. At the same time, I think you have to be very careful, and I, and I would warn you that more diligence needs to be done.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Music?
I do.
Mike?
So I'm just curious, is, is your objection to this, to any development there, or just to the residential retail?
Well, I think any development there is what we fought all along, and, and I think that, that at this stage of the game, that, that, as I said, we lost the suit, that die is cast. What I'm here to do is to, is to urge you to be very, very careful in this and, and to go forward with much more information and expert information before you approve.
Well, and to that point, to follow up, you keep saying we need to ask more questions, ask more questions. Mr. Cronin asks for your expertise, what questions are we not asking?
I only had five minutes.
Well, the, the one problem is this, this works us an hour, I was concerned this wasn't going to be enough time, because this is pretty detailed, but go ahead and continue and...
Okay. So what's the income breakdown for bond principal and interest payments, sales taxes, real estate taxes, after enacted taxes, utility taxes, where, how is that all going to flow? He answered some of those questions today, but I, I think you want to see that in chart form. What's the duration of time left in the TIF period? Is there enough time to pay off the bonds? What are the layouts of the proposed development? What is the balance of commercial versus retail versus residential? How much of the development is pre-leased versus speculative? Is there a TDD contemplated? Have the fire and school districts signed off? Has the county been fully apprised of all the city's agreements with the developer and its lenders? At what point will that happen? Are there any lawsuits or events of default existing or pending? Was eminent domain or threat of same used in the assembling of the land? Those are the questions I have so far.
Could you email, would you just...
Sure will.
...to us, the council?
Absolutely.
Well, we have it on tape now, so.
Yes.
That's kind of one of the reasons why I, I wanted to hear.
I understand.
One thing I think is pretty important, I'm hearing from both sides of this issue, is we need to work with guys, okay? And, and, you know, speaking for one of seven, you know, I'm intending to work with you folks, I, I know about the project from the get-go. I supported Great Rivers Habitat back when, when we fought this project, okay? But now I realize the die is, like, as you said, the die is cast, and let's see what we can get done. I do not feel like I have enough financial information, we've got a couple excellent CPAs on county staff, but I'd like to look to those numbers, because quite, what you said, some of that just flew right over my head, sir. And the other thing is, is somebody's going to spend that kind of money, I don't think it costs thirty thousand dollars to do a site plan, I've done them myself, okay? I want to see what's getting built, the type of residential housing. To me, it makes a big difference whether you have a tight apartment complex for rentals or you have condominium complex or townhomes, okay? I think that's, that's a huge difference to, to the area. So, I mean, it's, this is the show-me state, I want to see more stuff, I want you to show me, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, Mr. Cronin? Real quick, just, Don, another element of the history here...
He's going to show me.
...out of the way. Hey, geez. You'll get your chance. We, we met here in my office, Len was there, and I think Bill Cherninsky and you and Adolphus and Don and myself, and there may have been some others. I mean, this was a situation where they needed the, the county to sign the Form One.
Yep.
To avoid any kind of litigation and to, and to basically move forward with the project. You were not real happy with me when I decided to do that.
Still, I'm not happy with that.
But, but what you, what you did get out of that, that agreement, was an agreement that we wouldn't do all this over again, that they wouldn't go further out from St. Peters and, and we'd have the same sort of situation where they, they'd, you know, declare something blighted and go forward.
Yes.
What St. Peters and us both got was an agreement, you wouldn't oppose the extension as long as we kept it along the, the road.
That's correct.
My point is, everybody got something out of this.
Yes.
And one of the, the things that we got was the no, the no sales tax and the no residential. The sales tax is, was a selfish motive, the, the residential was really, I mean, we don't get much property tax, that was really for the schools.
Right.
So, I mean, I'm still, I was still like, I think, you know, there might be a project that wouldn't impact the schools, but then again, if you just open it wide up, you may end up with a project that really, really impacts them. So I, I agree with you in the sense that we, we kind of need more information.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Don. Tim, you got a question?
Yeah, I get, you know, it's pretty simple. It says developers need to know the extent of possible residential development before incurring the cost of preparing. You know, 30 to 50,000, you know, like most people, I'm pretty good spending somebody else's money. But I would think a project of this magnitude, I wouldn't see what the problem would be with them preparing something in detail to give to us prior to us making decisions on this.
And I'm not, I don't know whether they would or wouldn't. As they came in the door originally, there was just, there is no residential zoning here, so it's kind of like a nonstarter. And if you're telling us that you have an open mind to see more specifically where, and some of those kind of things, I mean, that's up to, because it's really between the developer and the landowner anyway. I mean, we're just kind of the facilitator here. And, you know, and part of coming here tonight, too, is a lot of what Mr. Music talked about is, that's old business, and it's done, it's settled. I mean, we have, you know, we're not in a position, we're not changing the TIF, we're not amending the plan, we're not abandoning our plans. And just for the public out there, this is not an SOS cry for the development area. It's going. I mean, Duke is building that building. There are developers knocking at the door. We will get development north with or without residential. It was just, it just didn't seem to make sense to just put up a barrier that didn't need to be there. And, because the sooner it develops, the sooner the other district's gonna reap the benefits. But saying yes or no on the residential doesn't suddenly make this project go away. I know maybe, maybe some hope that somehow that could happen. But, you know, we fought that battle. And so now we're basically ready to develop, and this is just a tweak to the plan. If you want to entertain it, we think there's a lot of merit to it. You know, we respect your own personal opinion, if you think it's not a good thing. But we think there's some merit. We think it'll be beneficial to the districts. But regardless of the decision, there's, this development area is now gonna go. We're gonna see great things out of this development. There's gonna be a lot of development. There's gonna be a lot of jobs created. And I think everybody's gonna be very proud of how it turns out, the same way we're proud about how the park turned out. So...
One second, Mr. Weber. Hold on a second. We gotta, we have to have this building, or this meeting wrapped up at 5 till, is that right? Or can we run over, what, huh?
To clear the room, yes.
Yeah, okay. So, do you want, Mr. Weber, two minutes? I mean, because we just want to conclude, and then we gotta get this cleaned up and set up for the meeting.
And thanks for setting so much time aside. I mean, we don't really set an hour aside for anything at St. Peters. So I know that's a pretty big deal, and we do appreciate it, and that, you know, the keeping an open mind is much appreciated as well.
Well, I would say this in conclusion, and I'll let you make a summary, conclusion, summary. But I think from the council's perspective, obviously, we have an open mind, and we wouldn't have had the meeting. Some may have more of an open mind than others. But needless to say, I think that, I think if you're a little more specific on what you bring to us, and I don't think spending a little bit of money on a million dollar project is asking too much, so we have some kind of direction. But I think, as far as the, that's the numbers that really we all care about, right, Steve? I mean, isn't that about the bottom line? And, you know...
We're good with the numbers. How do we get out of the agreement? If they're not gonna take our sales tax no matter what they do.
But then how, and then the other thing, we've already made one agreement. So how are we gonna know that this is the agreement? Are we gonna keep going back to the table?
Right now, it says no residential. It'd be something as simple as maybe...
No, no, but if we make the second agreement, we say, okay, you guys need 88, 9 acres, or whatever it is for residential, then in three years, you're gonna come back again. I mean, so when's it gonna stop? You know, I mean, just...
Well, we didn't think we'd be coming here even asking for the hundreds.
Exactly.
But, you know, I mean...
Times change.
Right.
Mr. Weber, can I give you two minutes?
You can.
Okay.
I'm Randy Weber. I'm the city attorney. But I wanted to just address one comment, and I think the world of Mr. Music, enjoyed visiting with him beforehand. But there's a fundamental mistake and misunderstanding about the nature of the TIF bonds. And as a county executive just pointed out to you, and correctly so, whether it's the county, or as Tim explained earlier with respect to the other taxing districts, there is no issues there. The monies are being returned, and have been, and will continue to be. I want to talk about though, and you had some bullet points that Mr. Music recited to you. Mr. Music is talking about a bonds that were sold publicly. The bonds, as Mr. Wilkinson told you, in this project, were not sold publicly. They were bought by the developer itself. Now, Duke Realty is the largest real estate investment trust in the United States. It is exchanged on the New York Stock Exchange. I think they understand exactly what it is they bought. And to the credit of both the city, the Levy District, and them, they're still there, and they're committed to the project and building. The point of which is, all of the analysis would be exactly correct. God bless Mr. Music for getting the city of Richmond Heights to agree to publicly sell those bonds, in which case you couldn't publicly sell those bonds unless some bank issued a letter of credit saying that the developer or somebody defaults will pay for them. You're familiar with that kind of process here at the county. Or you go out and you have a study. You named a very good company. You do, in a lot of different taxing districts, you're familiar with them. Neighborhood improvement districts, tax, transportation development districts. You go out and hire one of these companies, and they do a whole analysis of all of the revenue streams and the projected tendencies to figure out whether or not there is a revenue stream that will then support the payments to the bonds that are being sold to the public. Here, there are no bonds sold to the public, because the city never agreed to issue bonds to be sold to the public, but rather issued notes back to the developer. And as Tim correctly characterized it, if those notes don't get paid, that's a risk they assumed and understood at the outset. But a big difference.
The two areas of the proposed development are Levy District, not Duke Realty. Those guys sell bonds.
No, but the proceeds from the sale of the real estate to whoever buys it will be used to repay the Levy District bonds. And that's a good point, Mr. Cronin, because let's make sure we're talking about the same thing. Next week, the Levy District will go out and resell those bonds under a restructure of its bond payments that are paid out of Levy assessments. No different, the county executive was familiar with that years ago, working as a Levy attorney. Those are bonds that are supported solely from assessments in the Levy District. Nothing to do, nothing to do with TIF. So when you talk about TIF, and so, they really much hope somebody will buy all of this real estate, and one of these developers will buy it, so they can take that money from the sale of those bonds and pay down the Levy District bonds. The TIF District bonds is what Mr. Music was talking about, and what I wanted to clarify. Nobody owns those bonds but the developer.
Okay. All right, thank you. Quick questions for Mr. Weber? No, we're out of time, pretty much. Hey, guys, I guess what I'll say from here is, if it's possible, I don't know what your timeframe is. I know this is a big project, and everything's been taking so much time. But if you can give us something more specific, like...
Isn't that what the council's looking for? Something, a little better direction, like what exactly it is you're looking for? Like, we're gonna do this, and this is exactly how much is gonna be set aside for residential, these partials here, you could do it the lots, or acreage, or whatever, just so we're very specific, and then what your projections are gonna be. And I don't know if we want to have, I don't know, I mean, that's really our, we're, all we're talking about is residential. All the other stuff doesn't concern us. So, is that right?
I want to keep working with both sides of this issue, but I also want to hear internally what our Bob Snar and our staff auditor says, the two CPAs about the financial end of this, okay?
Well, I think we should see, we want to see the projections and numbers and everything, and how it affects. I think what our concern is, what you guys do within your city is your own business for the most part. But I think when it comes to the tax base, like, what entities are gonna be subsidizing? School, is school subsidizing? Fire district? Are they subsidizing the services? Those are the questions I would have, Steve.
I think you need to talk to Bob, because the thing that we have not understood in the past is you're gonna do more than 50%. You're gonna capture enough money to make these payments.
And the other thing, Tim, you talk about the projections of the money, the sales. But there is no, there are no, there is no money. And so there never has been any money. So those are the things that we need to completely understand. Because you can talk about pilots, this and that, but we've got to be more specific, so we know exactly what we're dealing with here. Is that fair?
It's time.
That's time. Sorry.
Thank you.
All right, guys.